Desiree, can we have roll call, please?
Sure.
Mayor Sagata, Mayor Protem Schuster?
Present.
Commissioner Chavez?
Present.
Commissioner Jacomel?
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Present.
Very good. You all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's lead you to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the great majesty of this world.
All right. Recognize visitors. Are there any visitors who have items that are not related to items on the agenda?
My name is Paul Recker. I've said hello to Scott and Neil by email.
Okay.
And I just thought I'd stop by and say hello to let them know who I am, what I do, what I've accomplished, and what I've done.
Very good. Would you like to come up to the podium?
No, sure.
And we usually allow like three to five minutes.
Three minutes is great.
I only had two minutes when I was at the Pentagon. So, not done. And they wanted to have a chance. They wanted to know what I was going to say before I said it. So, Scott?
Yes, thank you.
This is for, you know, essentially, a lot of this stuff is an email. So if you want it digitally or whatever, you can have access to it. As I said, my name's Paul Recker. Forty years ago, on October 8th, 1976, my mother committed suicide. Six months later, while I was active duty, United States Air Force at the Pentagon, serving at the 2044th Communication Group, I realized what that did to my ability to concentrate and be in the now, to develop my career. It tanked me. I sought the documentation of the fastest way to resolve the complicated grief in what we now call post-traumatic stress. Nobody's published the fastest way. I'm here to discuss that. I passed scientific review and by this document on the left side of your folder, Lieutenant Colonel Anthony Cox did a six-month review on a process of aberration, desensitization, and emotional reframing to change the emotional assignment to the event. In that video that was requested, poor Lieutenant Colonel Cox saw a woman who was molested in her youth from age 40 to age 13 in a session where she changed the emotional assignment to be a vet at a rate of four to six minutes per emotional assignment. Imagine if you can, changing the despair of a child who was raped. In the same manner that she transitioned into sleep with despair on those nights and in those events and in those thoughts where mommy and daddy should have kept her safe. Those emotional assignments of despair are not unique to rape or molestation, and they're not unique to someone who has lost their grandmother. I'm talking about associational learning of fear. It's all the same process. If you have a time interest, you can look through this. This has gone through General Richard Thomas and the latest officials in the DOD who I have spoken with. We can change his emotional assignments. So I've been told, bounced around, that I'm supposed to do a medical study under the purview of NIH. And because evidently that I don't have a credential by the American Psychological Association, those members, those elite members, make themselves so elite that they won't talk to me. So the document that got me to the medical review by the Department of Defense is this document that's in the binder. It starts out complicated grief. The document talks about the associational learning of fear created by events. And you can take a look at that if you'd like. It's there in front of you. It's in your hand. We don't talk about the cost of suicide. The cost of suicide is in the millions of dollars on each suicide because the family members lose their productivity and their ability to conduct traumas. Another document here is reflecting on a Vietnam veteran by the name of Jimmy Moore, who was smelling burning human flesh when his wife cooked bacon. That video is available for your review. He says his post-traumatic stress was cured. This document with the flyer on the banner on the top of it talks about a process to correct, improve reading for children who've been damaged and are not able to concentrate. This, I know we're out of time. I know you're watching.
No, let me just say, this is extremely interesting. I think anybody who wouldn't be interested is not paying attention to life. But what can we do for you? What is your plan?
My introduction to both Scott and Neil was on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, that I'd make myself available here at Raton for whoever wants to come in for a brief, brief session to break the emotional fixations of grief, which can be so overwhelming at Christmas it leads to suicide for the rest of the year. I am here to help, and I'm here to create momentum, like a avalanche, with the two medical studies that are suggested in this document. I said what I wanted to say, and I'm available for questions.
So do you have a location that you're setting up?
I had spoken today with Billy Dee, and Scott was great. He made the introduction to Billy Dee, and Billy Dee is saying, "Let's get you on the program, and let's find a location." So it's a work in progress.
Okay.
So.
Do any of the commissioners have questions? Or any thoughts?
Very interesting.
Yeah.
I believe that it's associational learning. Without the event, the association wouldn't be made, and extreme amount of ruminating occurs to compel the accumulation of fear under which such time the person goes into their own personal black hole, and their thought becomes a singularity of despair. So if you can think of any event that would cause somebody to transition to sleep with despair, that's the event I'm talking about. It's not just grief. I mean, this is a huge, wide subject.
Well, I think there are people and programs in our community that can help you create a program to work. And I'm sure Billy Dee can get a good place to start. And anything else we can do for you? If you come up with, you know, an actual plan of events that you can create, a process that you can do, that we can help with, talk to Mr. Barry, and we can see what we can do to help you along.
There's many things that can be done. And one thing is to work towards the Centers of Disease Control and NIH. They have millions of dollars of funds for what they call innovation research. And this is innovation. And I think if we bring the reading levels up of the five, six, seven, eight, 12-year-old children, so they're no longer in the despair of the broken family and the financial damage that that family lives in, they can then concentrate and grow to be the persons that they can be without that wave of that despair. Here I am, the phone number, it's in there. I want to help. You can see my enthusiasm, and I've got a short career left, maybe 15 years. In that career, we can do that.
Very good. I'll make you for your interest.
Tell Neil thank you.
Well, Commissioner, I think the mayor has tried to establish some of these communications with some of our groups here in town and possibly through the hospital. He's trying to make those connections. As you know, we're generally an underserved community in these type of services. And, you know, we'd like to see better services, better quality of services, but we're generally underserved. I think the mayor's taken some steps to try to make that connection, and I'll work with him on that.
Very good.
When people don't have despair, they're able to look at optimism and accomplishments. That's huge.
It is huge.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. This has been a good day. Thank you.
Very good. All right. The next regular meeting of the City Commissioner will be November 9th at 6:00 p.m. All city offices will be closed.
We do have some other folks that would like to address.
Oh, I'm terribly sorry. Come on, put the pet.
I'm in camouflage.
Yes, you are.
Blinded with the plants.
Terribly sorry.
So most of you know me, but my name is Pat Walsh, and I'm a Regional Interpreta Ranger with New Mexico State Parks. And the reason I'm here is that I've worked with kids periodically on different programs. And most recently, worked with the local sixth graders on an emergency preparation and climate resilience program. And so I just wanted to share with you some of the little projects that some of those students came up with. Before I did, though, I was just going to think about briefly. I've been here in Raton for 16 years, which isn't that long. But in the time I've been here, in 2011, we had the track fire, which was pretty intense. And I was ready to evacuate my house a couple of times with my pets and carriers and all my little treasures in the car and grab the guy at the last minute. And then, in the years since then, we've had a couple of other interesting situations. There was a time when there was this freak blizzard in November that bogged down the semi-trucks on I-40. And as a result, a lot of food didn't make it to our grocery store the next day. And so I stood in the grocery store looking at the egg section, and there were no eggs, and the veggies were almost zilch. So that was interesting. And then, you may recall, a few years back, we had that big hailstorm that took down a lot of the roofs in town. So we've been having, in the 16 years I've been here, what appears to be extreme weather that is related to human-caused climate crisis. So, in connection with that, it seemed like it might make sense to talk to the kids about what to do if there is an emergency and how to deal with that. I personally have a go-bag now, so that I can grab it and go. So 20 of the kids, 20 of the, about 60 kids, were chosen for their projects to get a grant-funded go-bag that included a $30 emergency radio, a whistle, and a little first aid kit, just to get them started. And that was provided with funding, $2,500, through the Remango Park Ranch, but the bigger organization, Turner Community Youth Foundation. I probably have that backwards. But they provided the grant funding for those go-bags, for those kits. So I have five letters here. I'll try and read them quickly. During the program, we kicked around ideas of how Raton could become more self-sufficient. Because in a way, it's almost like we're on an island here. Pretty much everything comes in from outside, unless you know somebody with chickens. So, you know, our food, our clothes, all those sorts of things, our gasoline, it's all coming on trucks from somewhere else. So we were just brainstorming things that might help mitigate either the climate crisis or help us to be more self-sufficient here in town. So I'm going to start off with a young man named Aiden Riley. And he says, "Dear City Commissioners, the reason Raton, New Mexico, should have a solar farm is that it would be more efficient. It would be much more efficient for many reasons. One reason it would be more efficient is because you will be creating your own power. Another reason it would be more efficient is that you will slow down the process of global warming. It may not be a drastic change, but it would help a bit. To also mention, you won't be emitting smoke into the air, which also helps us breathe better. The only downside of a solar farm," yes, the only downside, "is that they are expensive. Although solar farms are efficient, you could also get wind turbines. They are even more efficient by far. They double the conversion rates as well." No, I don't know what that means. "Which is very good. So for the most part, wind would be even better. It wouldn't always be active, but it would have a double conversion rate. I hope the reasons I provided will be enough to convince you to put a solar farm and/or wind farm." That, ugh, bleh. Let me try that again. "I provided will be enough to convince you that to put a solar farm or wind farm will work. Sincerely, Aiden." This is from Alyssa Lyles, and she says, "City Commissioner, I think that as a community, we should start to plant more trees. Because trees contribute to the environment by providing us oxygen. Trees also help with improving air quality. Climate amelioration." No, I did not use that word during the program. "Conserving water, preserving soil, and supporting wildlife. During the process of photosynthesis, trees take in carbon dioxide and produce the oxygen we breathe every day. Trees also provide us paper, egg cartons, and a lot more things. But now people go and cut trees down and don't plant more trees. We need trees to breathe, and that's why we should start to plant more trees in our town as a community." This letter is from, oh, by the way, I tried to get the kids to come, but they were too shy. This letter is from Miranda Medina. "Dear community people, please start a community garden. You can have kids work on the garden. Children are dedicated to gardens. Gardens will help the community to grow healthier food and more food for our school. The school can also use some of it." From Miranda. This is from Nathan Lay. "Dear City Commissioners, this is why I think we should have a solar farm or near Raton. The first reason is I think we should have a solar farm because fossil fuels make the Earth hotter. Second, it is good for the environment. Third, it is a free energy source. Fourth, because it's healthy for the environment. Fifth, because it would be cheap. These are the reasons why I think we should have a solar farm." And the last one I have for you is from Colt Ayen. Not sure I'm pronouncing that right. "Dear City Commissioner, community solar farms should be built in Raton because solar farms can help reduce water scarcity, and solar farms can offer cheap prices. Solar farms give clean energy, and they are reliable. They also do not cause pollution. Solar farms would reduce water usage. Could you imagine Raton with solar farms there would be hardly any pollution? A community garden should be built in the city of Raton because if there's an emergency and supply trucks from out of state can't make it to Raton, we may not have food for days, maybe. If we have a community garden, we can still get our food if there's an emergency with our supply trucks. Community gardens will also make a community healthy. Our community garden would build a greater feeling of community that would help reduce crime and allow people to feel safer in neighborhoods. Public transportation would help out the city of Raton very much because Raton has many elderly, some not capable of driving. A bus would help out very much. The bus would help out because everyone, not just the elderly, would all get to go where they need to. I think it would benefit people who don't have a car because the bus would be less time-consuming than riding the bus." I'm not quite sure that came out right. In any event, I wanted to share what the kids are thinking. We're looking at a situation where I believe we have a moral obligation to our kids, grandkids, and the folks who haven't been born yet to be thinking about what's going on on our planet and what we can do here locally to help make a difference. So I did bring copies of those letters.
Good. Oh, yeah. I think you can respond back to the children that want to hear them. And some of those projects are actually being worked on. That's one reason that we worked to bring in the cricket farm and the greenhouses that they are going to put up. The high school already has a greenhouse, and they are raising some of their, I think, salad mainly. So the city is trying to help in that project a little bit. And there was a community garden for a while. I know. And it needed to move. And I think we have worked with that group to create a new space for it. But it has not come back at this point, as far as I'm aware. And the solar farm, we've been looking at that since I got on the commission, and it's not an idea that's dead. So.
The children, I think, are thinking ahead, and it's impressive that they're far thinking at this time. It really is.
Well, you know, sometimes I'll tell the kids, you know, I've got maybe 20, 30 years left. They've got 60, 70, 80 years ahead of them. So it's, you know, I think that they need to have a voice in what we're thinking about these days.
And we appreciate that. We really do.
And just PS on the cricket farm. I've been reading about insects as a valuable source of protein, especially for our pets.
Right.
Which is something that I don't, as soon as we start running low on dog food, I'm going to start buying some cricket or mealworm dog food for my dogs. So, hey, why not start with them? See how they look, right?
They're going to bring us some cricket cookies.
Are they really? Oh, that's wonderful. That's great. Excellent.
So, yeah, every one of those ideas, we have looked at and are actually behind-the-scenes proceeding with. So when those things come to fruition, I think we'll be able to talk about it. But those ideas are good ideas, and we appreciate them bringing it to highlight.
Great. And in the meantime, the kids, some of the kids, their letters were to the school principal to plant some trees in front of the intermediate school.
Right.
So there is some grant funding still available that we might be able to buy some trees and have each of the sixth-grade classes plant their own tree.
You know, the Arbor Foundation will send trees to any kid who wants to write them or any group that sends a small, it's a small donation. We get 10 trees to plant.
Wow. Okay. Well, we could certainly look into that.
Yeah.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time. All right. Anything else from Citizens' presence that is not on the agenda? Back to the announcements. Next regular meeting is Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. And all city offices will be closed Thursday, November 11th, in the Observis of Veterans Day. Next item is committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley?
Okay. The Outdoor Recreation Task Force met October 13th on Zoom. We discussed some of the movement with Barlet Mesa and things going on there. Tyler Davis showed us preliminarily the things that he had drawn up regarding Roundhouse Park, so we thought we'd go over them together before he wanted to bring them to us. So we thought the task force would do that. So we're actually going to meet with Mr. Barry next week and go over that before it comes here to make sure, you know, things are looking good and any more input. We also talked about the El Portao lot and some ideas that we've had for that. We discussed the possibility of designating a bike route throughout town, and one of the members has come up with a preliminary plan for that. Mostly, it would just be signage to encourage people to bike. It's not a really expensive product, project. Those are the main things that we discussed. And like I said, our next meeting is going to be on Wednesday night, again, on Zoom. We've been Zooming. And then, North Central New Mexico Economic Development District met last Friday, October 22nd, on Zoom. The main things we discussed were EDA grants and the different people in the region who've put together grants, Raton being one of them. And they talked about some of the grants, depending on which category they're in, are on a first-come, first-served with funding. And so they were encouraging people with EDA projects to get things in before the deadlines just because they imagine the funding is going to, some of that temporary funding will run out. The other big thing we talked about is the, they've been told by the legislature, the government of New Mexico, that they're going to be looking at tourism projects for the ICIP planning for capital outlay. They did say that the description of that was very vague. And so I know I talked to Mr. Barry today. They're already looking at our ICIPs to see what things in there might be able to be pulled into that. But I know that there's, Chris Madrid is the one kind of leading the charge on that. So I imagine that that will be back in our, in front of us at some time. And that was pretty much it. Our next meeting is not until January. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Jacko?
Yeah. Mayor Protem, there was no scheduled meeting.
Okay. So the book sale, did that happen this past weekend? Or is that coming up? Okay. I just, I knew it was coming up, but I don't know when it is. Mr. Chavez?
I do have some. Myself and Mayor Protem Schuster attended the Water Board meeting on October 19th. And in the meeting, we found that Lake Maloya is currently at 2 and 1/2 feet below the spillway. It was 5 and 1/2 feet below the spillway October of last year. And we are currently operating on the Simron system primarily. The Funeal Crossing repairs are completed and are currently using the new crossing pipeline to transport water to Raton. They replaced a 10-inch valve on the NRA water line, replaced a filter at the new lift station, and we hired a diver at the cost of $5,000 to dive at Maloya and close the main valve that has been causing us problems. And the diver went down and closed that. No problems there. Crews finished vegetation mitigation on Lake Dorothy Dam. And then we heard a report on the New Mexico Finance Authority loan application is to be discussed tonight at the commission meeting. And the Financial Board did meet on October 21st, and the Board approved financials to be presented to the commission meeting tonight. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, I just want to add to your Water Board meeting that there was a video of the diver, and that was, that was actually pretty interesting to watch that video. We didn't get to see him, but we understand that the diver was actually in one of those old-fashioned, bell helmet. So, but it was.
It was a good video.
It was pretty interesting. Kind of made you a little dizzy, but it was good. So I have no additional real reports. I did attend, last night, I attended the Raton listening session. I was able to make it to the intermediate school. There was one at Longfellow and then at the intermediate school. I found it very interesting. They are trying to create situations where they hear the public. They're also asking the students basically the same questions. You know, what will make our school district better? If you have, anyone has any time to attend these meetings. It's a good, well-planned meeting. They have good information to share and are very accepting of suggestions. Actually, I should have shared with Mr. Recker. He could probably attend one of those and maybe create a partnership with the school district in some way. So I recommend that. The next meeting is November 9th, which is Tuesday. We'll all be here, but anyone else who can attend that meeting should. And one thing I noticed, Mr. Barry, as I was coming out of the intermediate school in the darkness, there aren't quite enough streetlights under there. We should think about some kind of lighting. Those steps were a little bit dangerous for some of the people coming out of that building. That's something to be looked at. All right. Moving on, I guess I got items from Citizens' present out of order. That should be next, but we took care of that. So let's move on to action items. So deliberate an act on the approval of the meeting minutes from October 12th. Everyone, I'm sure, has had time to look at them. Are there any?
I'm not sure I make motion to approve.
Right. Okay, it's been moved and approved to accept the meeting minutes from October 12th, 2021. Are there any objections? All in favor? Vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Ayes have it. All right. Next meeting, our next item is lodgers tax recommendation for KENW FM radio advertising. Mr. Barry?
Mayor Protem and Commissioner, in your packets, you do have a memorandum of the recommendation from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, and I will read that now. The Lodger's Tax Advisory Board met on October 20th, 2021, and made the following recommendation to the Raton City Commission. the Raton City Commission for funding from the lodgers tax promotional fund, K E N W FM radio. Description is as follows. NPR news package for 52 weeks of airtime that covers the majority of New Mexico as well as West Texas area, plus a print ad in the Q 23 magazine and a link to the explore rattown.org and social media presence on the K E N W Instagram and Facebook accounts. The recommendation of the lodgers tax advisory board is forwarded to the commission to award $3,500 for this described promotional item from the radio loaning item. You have some supporting documentation in the packet. Michael Ann had attended the meeting. I think she could help you with any questions that came up from the meeting as well.
I've heard those, you know, the ads that we've had so far, they're very well put together, nicely done ads. I think they do promote Raton and the area pretty well.
I like that they're having the ads during the morning edition and all things considered. I think those are really good air times.
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve the lodger's tax recommendation for K E N W.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the lodger's tax recommendation for K E N W FM radio advertising. All in favor? Vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Any additional discussion? Item approved. Thank you. Deliberate an act on authorization of purchased roll-off containers for New Mexico River Transfer Station. Mr. Barry?
Mayor Pro Tim and Commission, did you have a memorandum from the Public Works Director, Jason Phillips? He was unable to attend the meeting tonight. He gives you a recommendation for, award this based off of written quotations for the pricing for roll-off containers that would be used at the new Hurford Avenue Transfer Station. So pricing consists of four 40 cubic yard roll-off containers and one 30 cubic yard roll-off container that will be used at the station. If you add up the, the best pricing obtained, which was submitted by Waste Whip, that would be an aggregate amount of $44,923. That would come from, from the enterprise fund and solid waste. You have some supporting documentation attached to that. I would concur with Public Works Director's recommendation for this. Would require approval from the commission, Mr. Seig.
Thank you. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve. I think we need them. The transfer station is looking pretty sharp, so I think we need to get them done.
It does look good. People are anxious for it.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the roll-off containers for the new Hurford Transfer Station. All in favor? Vote by the sign of aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Item is approved. Thank you. Deliverate an act on letter of engagement from Modrel Spurling for bond council services related to N M F A financing for Simron Pump Station upgrades. Mr. Barry?
Mayor Pro Tim and Commission, you'll recall, several years ago, we did have a refunding and financing issue regarding debt on the Aquatic Center through New Mexico Finance Authority. And at that time, we did retain Modrel Spurling for the legal advice and assistance on that. We have obtained a proposal from Modrel for the financing related to the Simron Water Delivery System upgrades. And so we are planning on proceeding with that at this time. We bring the cost proposal to the commission for your consideration. Modrel Spurling proposes to provide the legal services through this financing issue for flat cost of $20,000. What we propose to do is finance approximately a million dollars from New Mexico Finance Authority to do this phase of the upgrade of the Simron Water Delivery System. We may have talked about this before, but that system came online in the early 1980s. It is approaching 40 years of age. The proposed work for that would be replacement and rehabilitation of pumps, motors, pump control systems, control valves, other piping or valving, and the telemetry that is required to run the system. So primarily, the system is operated from the filter plant by operators there. They can look at each pump station and pretreatment and see how the operation is, is working and control it from there. In order to do that, we bounce a signal off of Eagle Tail and it has to get all the way to pretreatment up Simron Canyon. So there would be an upgrade of, of those systems. And of course, any technology system that you might imagine was implemented in the 1980s is well past its useful life. So we would be implementing primarily new technology in addition to upgrading pumps and motors that go along with it. Now, we generally are limited to a project of about a million dollars due to the, an existing state purchasing agreement. That stipulation is in there. To fully rehabilitate the system, we would need something on the order, probably north of $1.5 million, probably closer to $1.75 million. However, we're limited to a million dollars here. So we'll generally do the upgrades that we talked about, but the pump stations would be limited to number two and number three. There are some improvements at pretreatment. However, we've worked on pretreatment in past years and we generally would avoid pump station number one at this time. And then somewhere down the road, probably try to come back and complete that phase. I'll answer any questions you might have.
This is just for the legal monitoring, basically, of the project, correct?
What is required here is you'll recall that in previous financing actions like this, there would be an ordinance that's prepared by council and brought to the commission. Now, we would go in front of New Mexico Finance Authority, their board for approval, but there will be documents that come back to the commission, including the ordinance. So we will, if this step is approved, we will move forward with the finance authority and documents to come to the commission. And generally, we would be backing into a timeframe where funding is made available approximately the end of January 2022. And we would move forward with the construction of the project at that time.
I have one question. Mr. Barry, do we need to authorize you to sign this? It looks like on the back. Has you accepted the agreement?
Correct. So we would need to make a provision for that in the, in the, in the action. Or we could have that revised if you would, if you would prefer.
Fine. I think I'll make a motion to approve the letter of engagement from Modrel Spurling for bond council services related to the N M F A financing for the Simron Pump Station upgrades and with authorizing, Mr. Barry, as a signatory.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. To approve the letter of engagement from Modrel Spurling for bond council services related to N M F A financing for Simron Pump Station upgrades. Any further discussion? All in favor? Vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you for that. Good explanation. And I'm sure anybody who has questions can follow me up.
They certainly can. We'll be talking about this through November and December. I think one thing I would add to that is that the funds for the project would come from the supplemental grocery seed stacks. That's three quarters of that was approved by the voters back in 2018. And this project is one thing that we talked about. You'll recall that that issue was on the ballot back then and overwhelmingly approved by voters, like about 95% approval. So this is, you know, something that was represented at that time and, and now is moving forward, but the supplemental grocery seed stacks.
All right. Item E. Deliverate an act on the adoption of city of Raton credit card policy. Michael Ann.
Good evening, Mary and Commission. In your packet, we do have a policy for the use of credit cards. We bring this to you this evening for consideration. I just wanted to note that we currently do not have a credit card for purchasing other than fuel cards. And we do have tractor, a tractor supply card. And that card is shared between Water, the city, and R P S. And then we just kind of break up the bill when we get it. And so that's nice to have because we do have clothing allowances for our union employees. And so they're allowed to check out the credit card here in the office. We make them sign out the card and then sign it back in and bring a receipt so that we can kind of match everything up to the invoicing. And then, of course, the WEX fuel cards, that's a state price agreement that we've utilized for several years. And so we can use those cards locally and when traveling. So we do currently have those two cards. In talking with our auditors, it's good to adopt this policy for the existing cards that we have. But also, in talking with Raton Water Works, we're considering, and we haven't done it yet, but we'd like to maybe have just one card, maybe like a Visa, to pay for registrations. Some things that we have to, there's very few things that we prepay for, but when it comes to like registrations for MOLI or any of the municipal league trainings, more and more they're requiring that you do it by credit card. So it would be a little bit more convenient. We could just issue one P O, pay with it with a credit card and then pay it when the statement comes in. We do realize that over the years, especially when it comes to the auditors, that, you know, this is something that they look very closely at. And so we're kind of bringing this to you at the suggestion of the auditors, to have a good policy in place so that we could strictly control the use of the card. And so it's something that would not be issued to anybody specifically and it would be kept here at City Hall and safe. So that's kind of our intention. This isn't purchase cards or department heads would be getting cards for that purpose. So that's what we're proposing. And this is the policy that we bring to you tonight for consideration.
It looks like a good policy to meet.
I believe Raton Water Works, they'll probably bring it to the water board at the next meeting for their consideration as well. Geneva has offered to kind of do some of the lake work to kind of shop around for various cards and see what our best option is.
Looks to me like a good policy. And I mean, it's very specific on timeline and receipts and everything, which I think is important when having this kind of thing. And I also, like you're saying, I think it's essential because in the world we live in, there's a lot of things that the credit card is the, is the easiest method to pay for.
Yeah, I could foresee this too. I mean, if we're booking hotels for travel, I mean, in the past year and a half, there hasn't been a lot of travel. But I'm sure once we get past the pandemic, we'll start to see employees having to travel more.
And a lot of places don't take a P O. So.
No, no, we run into that a lot. And so a lot of times, we're just using our personal card to charge various things. And that's fine, too. But sometimes the purchases could be, you know, over $1,000.
Right.
So unless you have enough credit on your, your card, it can be difficult at times. So anyway, is there any questions that anybody has regarding our proposed policy? And the nice thing about a policy is, you know, we provide it to the auditors and then they kind of test by pulling samples of invoices and make sure that we're following the policy.
My commission, approve the adoption of city Raton credit card policy?
All second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the city of Raton credit card policy. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor? Vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. And you're up for the next one. Deliverate an act on resolution 2021-63, approval of FY22, first quarter financial report.
Mayor Pro Tim and Commission, in your packet, we do have our reconciled report. The period is in September 30th. So this is the first quarter report that will be submitted to the Department of Finance no later than October 31st. Also, I wanted to point out that the cumulative general fund grocery seeds collected as of October is 5.9% above our general fund year-to-date budget projection. And we kind of discussed that at the last meeting, which is really attributed to the construction that we've seen and then possibly to the new online sales tax. But compared to last year's cumulative G R T for the same period, we are seeing an overall increase of about 14.3%, which would indicate that we possibly may have been a little too conservative in our budget projections. We may have underestimated our projection. But like I said, that still has to be seen as far as possibly what the impact of the online sales tax is going to be. So we're going to continue to monitor our grocery seeds going into the winter months. And so as stated before, the new online sales tax is mixed in with our various tax increments and industry classifications. So it's difficult for us to just look at the report and say this is how much we're collecting from the online sales. So we're hoping that maybe during the non-construction months, we can do a little bit of analysis compared with last year, maybe see if we're seeing an increase. So the other thing that we also like to point out is a small city's assistance. We did budget $250,000 for the FY22 budget. That generally will be distributed after the 30-day legislative session that ends February 17th. So we'll probably receive that distribution a little earlier this year since it is a 30-day session. And hopefully, if it'll be more than what we budgeted, but if there is some type of a shortfall, then we could potentially utilize the increase in the G R T to offset that. So we'll be monitoring that as well. So I've also provided you, I think I put it at your chair, you should have that report and your grocery seeds tax breakdown. And then in your packet, we have the reconciled cash balances. And then also, we did provide you the lodgers tax comparison. That particular report looks pretty good for the first quarter. If we're looking back to the last quarter, most of our lodging establishments were still faced with major restrictions, limited occupancy requirements. So we have seen a huge increase, but during the lodgers tax meeting last week, it was pointed out that it's not necessarily maybe that we've had more heads and beds, but I think the prices that our lodgers have had to charge the last few months, from what I hear, some of the rooms in Raton are well over $200 a night. So we think that that could be representative, not due to an increase in travelers, which we know that is a part of it. But I think there's also been an increase in the room rates. And then we've also given you the gas tax comparison. And so really, over the past year and a half, we've seen a pretty significant increase in the gas tax revenues. And so the distribution that we collected in October was $27,255.85. And so really, that's the highest distribution we've had in the last 45 years, the month of October. Scott, did you want to make any comments on that?
Well, I would announce that, you know, we, we were a part of the City of Albuquerque versus Tax and Revenue Department. That issue has been settled. It's been settled by agreement of the parties. There actually were, I believe, 44 local governments involved in that. But a distribution has been completed to the city of Raton. We have certified that to We have certified that to the attorneys, and that would close that matter, I think, the net proceeds to Rattone. Now, the settlement was $50 million. I think the proceeds to Rattone were somewhere under $50,000 or so.
Yeah, it was $53,214.
Well, and then, we would pay attorneys, some attorney fees out of that. So they go settle up at 49 and some change.
Yeah, I think the attorney fees were close to $5,000.
Oh, primarily, you know, Albuquerque was the principal player in that and had a big chunk of that, and there were many other local governments. And we were a pretty small piece of that. But we've talked about that for a while now. That issue has settled. So that would be something in the current distribution that we didn't see a little piece of it.
That's great. Yeah, and actually, the figures you have in your chart there, it's not included in that amount. So actually, what Taxon did was they gave us our normal report 500 that breaks it out by classification, and then the actual distribution represents what's deposited into the bank. And so, there was a difference of the $53,214. So they just kind of rolled it into one distribution, but it's not part of our overall tax report. Is there any questions on any of our first quarter financial information?
It's nice to have good news, to have the number going up and not down.
Exactly.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-63, approval of the FY22 First Quarter Financial Report.
I'll second. Very good. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2021-63, approval of FY22 First Quarter Financial Report. All those in favor, vote for the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2021-64, FY22 Budget Adjustment.
Mayor and Commission, so as part of our first quarter review, we've prepared a fairly short budget adjustment. We generally try to do one about once or twice a month. So in this adjustment, we are requesting, we did not include any abatement expense in our FY22 budget. So this budget adjustment would be coming from the utilizing general fund reserves. And we're requesting to increase that budget to about $5,000 so that we could potentially hire some environmental services for asbestos remediation on various properties. So in addition, we did receive some hazmat revenues for fireworks permit and also reimbursements for the rent con and the Alamo fires. And those monies will be put into our vehicle line item under fire grants. Also, the economic developments, we're looking to reclassify a portion of the salary to professional services. You'll recall back in May, the Commission did approve a workforce training agreement with the Center for Community Innovation, and I didn't budget that into the new budget. So that would take care of that for 11 months. It actually started in June of last year. And then also, we closed out the Main Street, like Great Blocks project. And so, I need to include a line item for the revenue received from those final reimbursements. And then lastly, we did receive some fireworks donations. So we're just adjusting revenue expense, and those funds will be utilized to provide the 2022 show. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve budget adjustment number three, Resolution 2021-64 for fiscal year 22.
I'll second. Very good. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2021-64, FY22 Budget Adjustment. All those in favor, vote for the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Opposition, motion passes. I understand, item H, we're looking for a postponement, that is, Resolution 2021-65, Authorization of Certification of City of Rattone's 2021 Capital Asset Inventory. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Proton and Commission, the city clerk is still working on that item. We are asking the Commission to postpone that till our next regularly scheduled meeting. What the work that is included here is adding fixed assets to the inventory, such as the Great Blocks projects, maybe infrastructure or projects, or could be equipment or things that we've talked about here in recent months, and completed, and they would be added to the inventory. So that work is underway, but we would ask to postpone that for a certain time.
Make a motion to postpone Resolution 2021-65 in November.
I'll second it.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded to postpone Resolution 2021-64, Authorization of Certification of the City of Rattone's 2021 Capital Asset Inventory to November 19th. All in favor, vote for the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. McMurtry, did you have anything to bring before the Commission tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Just thought I'd check. City Managers' Report.
Mayor Proton and Commission, thank you. I can report that our EMS and fire personnel have been working with the New Mexico Department of Health, operating a vaccination clinic. In the past couple of weeks, they do have a vaccination clinic scheduled at the convention center tomorrow, and for the foreseeable future, it will be scheduled every Wednesday. Someone interested in attending this clinic, either for initial vaccination or booster, would need to arrange that through New Mexico Department of Health, and they will schedule the time. So I'm not really talking about the time. Every individual would be scheduled by Department of Health. But our crew is participating in that, and we are making the convention center available for that as well. And I think in the past couple of weeks, we've had a really strong turnout for that clinic. I did attend a virtual meeting of the State Board of Finance that was held on October 19th in regard to the city's request for the transfer of the school facility from Rattone Public Schools to the City of Rattone. You'll remember that we've talked about that a couple of times here in the past months. The school had also approved a resolution and approved the agreement that we had brought to the City Commission. That request was approved by the State Board of Finance, and so now we will complete that transfer. And of course, there are a number of steps. And as we talked about then, that proposal was for the proposed development of a film production facility and workforce development project. We would anticipate discussion of an EDA grant application, try to bring that to the Commission, hopefully at the early meeting in November for your consideration, and try to pursue funding for the project. It's something that I'm pretty optimistic about, and we'll talk a lot about, we'll talk additionally about that as we go. Lastly, I would give the Commission and the public a quick review of the vacant building ordinance. That's a new ordinance that was passed by the City Commission earlier in 2021. We do have some new staffers, as we had talked about, that are contacting property owners and updating them, kind of a courtesy letter, I would say, in regard to the requirements of this ordinance. Now, basically, just to summarize that, the owner of a vacant building would have a responsibility to register the vacant building. There is an annual fee that would go with that, and there also is a requirement to carry insurance to cover the building. This is really in response to the large number of vacant buildings that exist in Rattone. Those are buildings that are residential, commercial, or industrial in nature. We have an extensive inventory of those. And that's to remind property owners that they do have a responsibility to the community. There is an impact to the community created by vacant buildings, and we would like to work with all property owners as far as getting their registration, but then possibly putting those buildings to a good use. And so, we are fielding a lot of phone calls, visits with people. We are open for people to come down and discuss that. And I think there's some general confusion on what's required of property owners and why. And so, we do have staff available here to discuss that. I would state, Commission, that we also have stepped up our enforcement of ordinance regarding nuisances. And the definition of nuisances can be very broad. Dangerous buildings, we do have an ordinance regarding dangerous buildings. We will look at zoning violations and we'll look at things like graffiti as well. So the staff we put in place are actively contacting property owners in regard to those things as well. And that's all I have, Mayor Proton.
Very good. Any questions here? City Manager. All right. At this time, we will be moving to executive closed session pursuant 1015-1, H5 Collective Bargaining, Rattone Police Officers Association. Do you need to move a second?
I think so.
You do.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to move to closed.